So we probably could get started. I can go first. My name is Audrey Shudek. I'm running for school committee as a teacher myself. I teach in the Chicopee Public Schools and I have been for 14 years. I teach kindergarten and I just found when I was going to meetings, there was many times that I had questions or I wanted to speak up and I really couldn't. I found myself at the edge of my seat sometimes, so I figured that this was the best opportunity. When I heard Mr. Petrus was going to step back and not go again for his seat, I figured I would run and it'd be nice to have that teacher perspective on the board. That's why I'm here.
You can go, Mike. My screen is freezing on. Make it move.
Okay, well, I'm Mike Simpson. I'm on the school committee currently. I'm also part of the Cub Scouts. I do a lot of work with the PTO at times. I've done some work with them, especially with the Pancake Supper. And I've also done the cooking for the GPS with their car show. So I end up somehow doing a lot of that food work for a lot of the organizations in town. And I'm also in part of the UCC Church. I do the loaves of love where before this, this whole thing started with COVID-19, I would bake bread for them once a month that they would distribute around town to people who just moved in.
Awesome. All right, and last up is me. So I'm Stephanie Parent. I have two kids at East Meadow. One is going to first grade and the other is going into fourth. I started going to school committee meetings last fall. And honestly, the more meetings I went to, the more confused I became and realized I didn't know much about our town offices. So then I started attending the select board meetings and special town meetings. And before you knew it, I was very social. And it just became apparent to me that I wanted to do more than just comment during the beginning of meetings. And with my kids and just my personal experience, I was drawn with the school committee. I worked for the Special Education Department at West Street and East Meadow. And during that time, made some great relationships there. So I had some previous background that I think would be qualitative share as a previous employee and just maybe some ways we could better connect with the staff would be terrific. Now I am actually a real estate agent, which has been amazing and giving me a lot of flexibility with my time and availability to dedicate to other things. I know that there were times that we really wished school committee members had the availability to go into the building while it was in session. But it's really tough because school committee is a lot of work, a lot of hours, and it is volunteer. But I think it'd be great to be able to have the ability to be able to do that and see the building running during the day and different things that, you know, we could do. And that's about it.
Does anybody have any questions? Or, I don't know. It's very strange looking at all the little tile.
Well, I just wanted to see what this was all about. And is it just you two ladies running for school committee? How many seats are going to be open between the three of you? Is it just Mr. Petrus stepping down?
So and Mike is up for reelection.
Oh, okay. So you two ladies are running for Mr. Petrus's position or spot?
Well, I'm not sure. I think one of us is going to run uncontested and we just don't know who yet, right?
So as far as I understand it, that there are two seats open and then Mike is hoping to get his seat back. Obviously, that's why he's running for reelection. But two seats are available, so it could be any two of us, any combination of two. However, the vote ends up coming out.
Well, good luck to both of you. When do we vote?
You can vote right now via the mail. And the actual vote itself is June 22nd.
Okay, I remember seeing that sign out in front of the...
They're really encouraging people to reach out to Kathy Kelly Regan. You can either call her or I had shared something on Facebook. Stephanie, I think you had too.
I just shared something also about registering online. And normally, you'd actually have to do it earlier than 20 days before the election. But with the pandemic, I know that Kathy Kelly Regan is very flexible and is more than happy to help assist voters doing absentee ballots.
Okay, well, you can still have the voting in person that day on the 22nd.
The times are going to be much more limited than they usually are. And obviously, there you have the sanitation requirements due to the COVID. So that's why she was like, you know, share it away. She's like, the more people that mail vote, the better. So you just have to download a document, fill it out. I dropped it right in the offices. There's a little mailbox right on the door that I put it on. And then I got mine in the mail a day or two later. So I can fill it out and the same thing, mail it back.
All right, that sounds easy. Okay.
Thank you. All right, thank you.
Somebody just asked a question. I'm not good with this, but I did see something pop up.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I don't know how. Do we just want to give each other a brief...
It was me. Mike, you noticed it. Do you want to go first?
Want me to go first? The top three things, the top three things I would focus on? Well, we need a new superintendent now. That's probably number one, right? Because we can't let the district go without a leader. Number two would probably be, you know, understanding and working through whatever state comes out with for requirements to reopen and what that means and what the impacts on the students and the budget are. And of course, the budget is going to be pretty tough this year and probably the next couple of years. Based on the meeting we had last night with the Finance Committee and the Select Board, they're predicting some pretty significant cuts to state budgets, which are definitely going to impact the town budgets, which are then going to impact the school budgets. So there's a lot of work coming up over the next year, two, couple of years, I think, with regards to those three things specifically. Then, of course, there's still work that needs to be done with trying to figure out how we can best get... It's not a capacity issue, but how we can best configure East Meadow School to fit the needs of what we want to do there. Still a lot of open things to discuss and a lot of things to figure out.
I'm going to piggyback on that. And it's funny, I was just thinking when I first read it, how those top three things have changed just in the last few weeks, you know, where we wouldn't have thought that we'd be dealing with a new superintendent. And now how that's become one of the top priorities. And again, just a few months ago, we wouldn't have thought of everything happening with the budget and how much it's gotten cut just from this one thing. And then I would agree, the next is the said capacity issue, which that one's a big one. Obviously, that's one of the main reasons I started getting involved. So not to say that the superintendent is less, it would definitely be number three. But reopening the schools is going to be another big one too, and how logistically that's going to happen. And those conversations are going to have to start all this summer. So it'll be important that we keep families informed as those decisions come about.
Well, and then just to reiterate, I mean, I think we're all in the same boat. First and foremost, of course, will be the superintendent when that is official. It is not yet. But when it is, definitely finding a leader for the school, especially in the pandemic that we're in. And then, of course, it's going to be how to reopen. That's going to be a huge factor that I don't think was really anything anyone could have planned on. And going back to before, those two huge things, and of course, the budget, which is going to be very, you know, heavily impacted. I mean, I heard the meeting last night and if there was talk of even a 5% reduction, that's a lot. And I think that's going to have to take priority along with, of course, reopening with superintendent. The others, I would say maybe a few months ago, what I really wanted to look into was strengthening the relationship between the town and the schools. I think having an open line of communication and more transparency between the two would help both run more effectively and smoother. That's something I would definitely want to work on, whether it be liaison or like I said, even myself, I started attending a lot of town meetings, probably four months at the rate we were going. And there's just, I think, a lot of room to grow the communication between the departments as well as the capacity issue at East Meadow still needing to be solved. And I'd love to also really start focusing a little more on the high school and breaking the stigma that, you know, apart from the buildings, repairs that need to be done, but focusing on all of the good things that are happening at the high school that I feel like don't get shared as much as they could be.
That I have to agree with absolutely.
I don't want to, I don't want to, I mean, I just want to jump on a couple of things that you said because I mean, I think, I thought a lot of that was really, really good. To the point of how things change quickly, when we were going into session this time last year and even into September, actually, I think it was October, when the school committee itself started getting information externally about moving sixth grade. Like we were, like that wasn't even on our radar going into last year. To that end, I was actually trying to figure out a couple of things, like how we can restructure ourselves to be more effective in our meetings so that we're not spending the whole meeting discussing every little detail ad nauseam, trying to get some of that done in a subcommittee where we could still, we could still discuss it in a full committee. But then being able to advocate more for the kids, right now, we just struggle for time to find that. And then also, the high school has also been a big, a big piece. But yeah, I mean, at the point I'm trying to make here is things change quickly. And what we're talking about now may change again by, you know, by September.
Absolutely.
Right. And that's exactly that key point is if this exact question had happened, even if I'd, you know, had that this April one, we would have been having completely different answers most likely.
Right, because I could even dive into little things. Like I had mentioned in the beginning of the fall when I was going to the school committee meetings, I would have loved for little index cards for comments for visitors because I feel like a lot of people don't come to meetings because unfortunately, it is a business meeting and you are listening to that and that might not be the most fun thing and you can't pipe in. But that may be having a little comment card to write down some thoughts and just pass them in at the end so that you could feel like, you know, maybe you didn't have something to share and it was actually noted would be great. I just think unfortunately, a lot of people don't come. And I'd love to make this a more welcoming thing that people do join and not just when there's issues going on, but all the time. So definitely things are changing though. That's, I mean, very bottom of the totem pole in comparison to things that we're dealing with right now.
I don't know if there's any other questions. I don't see any in common or any other things that anyone wants to ask.
It sounds like you three agree on a lot of things and that's so awesome. And I'm kind of curious how you differ in your opinions about like how to find a good superintendent or how to solve occupancy issues and things like that.
Good question.
I don't know if you want me to start again, but...
Sure. I don't mind.
A couple of things. The superintendent is always tough. It wasn't long ago, it was only a few, a few years ago, the school district was in a completely different place. We had kids walking out of classes, going to protest on 202 about cutbacks and things. I think the district lost a lot. There was, there was quite a number of, you know, cutbacks in the budget. We weren't able to meet the budget properly. We had to do some drastic cuts. And I think morale was bad with instructors. I'd have to rely on those people that are the teachers and the staff. But that's what I had heard and that's what I understood to be the case. It hasn't been easy. Over the last few years, the district has made some great strides. To be honest with you, most of that work was actually set up by people who were on the committee when I just joined. And we've, you know, we've just taken it further. They created a strategic plan and a lot of what we do is kind of based towards that strategic plan. Things aren't perfect. In some cases, things aren't even great, but things are better than they were before and we're moving forward. We've been able to, the last two years, we haven't had to go out on town meeting floor and ask for anything beyond net school spending plus the 305, 797 override, which was, which was put into effect about 10 or 12 years ago, which historically has been where FinCom and the Select Board has wanted us to put our budget. And at the same time, we've been able to bring back some things that were cut and start to build up what people have called the reserves. But it's not really what it is. It's like where we would like to be best practices is to have one year in arrears for school choice and circuit breaker funds. We weren't there at this point, but we had built up probably about a half a year's worth, I want to say, maybe three quarters of a year. But we may end up having to dip into that and almost wipe that out to make things work for next year without making too many drastic cuts. But the point is, is things are better. They're not great, but there's still a lot more work to do. But we're nowhere near where we were just a few years ago. As far as the communications with the town, yes, it's always been a very tough, tough sore point for the committee. I believe as part of one of our solutions is we built a subcommittee for community outreach. This past year, with the capacity issue popping up, we weren't really able to put that where we wanted to put it. I think there's an awful lot of stuff that still can be done there. And I believe that they were focusing on internal, like being able to reach parents and other people within the school community. But my hope was that we would be able to take that and actually do community outreach and that goes much more beyond what we just have in the district. I mean, if you look at the number of people in town versus the number of people in the district, it's, it's almost like half the people in town have kids in the school and the other half doesn't. And that's where we, that's where we struggle as a community. And I think we really need to bridge that gap in order to, you know, be a whole community. And that, and that's just my thought. And I'm sorry if I stray.
That's okay. I feel like it's not really straying though because they are kind of all intermixed. It kind of goes all together. As far as finding a new superintendent, I feel like it's definitely going to be a challenge for a small district, where a small town. I know from the past, the last time they were trying to find a superintendent, Cheryl wasn't necessarily even the first pick. She was the runner up. So you come to those instances as well. I know they're going to formulate a group. And usually, correct me if I'm wrong, Mike, it's parents, it's community members. It's not just the school committee during the pre-process.
A search committee.
A search committee, right? It's not usually just the school committee members.
So there's, there's, yeah.
And then it depends too if we get involved with, I'm trying to think of the right word, the group that sometimes they have a group. My mind just went oof.
Well, I know, so if you're talking about a group, I'm thinking you might be talking about, you might be talking about the MASC, the Massachusetts.
Yes, that's it, MASC, I'm like acronym.
Yeah, the Massachusetts Association of School Committees.
Okay.
Yeah. They, they do have an arm and they worked with us the last time for the search committee because I was, I was part of that search committee.
Okay, you were. My apologies.
So to answer your question, there's a lot of options available. We don't, like, we're talking about it as a committee. We can set our own parameters around how we want to do the search. We don't even need to go outside the community if we don't feel there's going to be any value there. I believe we can set the timeline of like, we're going to post the job for X number of weeks and then we're going to take whatever's there and then decide if we're going to, you know, extend that. But to your point, I do think it's going to be really difficult to find somebody.
I feel like too with it being such short notice.
Well, that's right. I'm a little eerie about myself because nothing has even officially been announced yet. So we're kind of sitting at this point before we can even search for a new superintendent because currently we haven't heard that Cheryl Stanton is leaving yet.
But she, she has officially given me her resignation and we have discussed that with the committee.
Oh, okay.
So it's official and my, you know, I'm sorry if I'm supposed to do, do, do something to get that word out to everybody, but she has officially resigned. I haven't received anything in writing, but the committee is aware of it. And there is, we are, we are looking at ways we can do sort of like an interim.
That's what I was thinking as well.
Okay, I'm sorry. I didn't realize that. I thought that it was maybe going to come up in last night's meeting and it didn't. So I hadn't heard anything officially and didn't want to spread anything without knowing for sure that it was in fact official.
It is definitely going to be on the agenda for next Tuesday because we do need to make some official statements so that we can take the next steps to get the interim.
Okay, that's good to know, Mike, because as a teacher in the school, we only know what everybody else has read, you know, in the, you know, Mass Live. So we don't even know officially from our administration that she's leaving.
Okay, I was not aware of that.
I thought it was on Facebook.
Well, I first saw it on Mass Live and then I saw it all over Facebook. But that's it.
Yeah, and this one's kind of tough for me because I keep putting myself in the shoes of, you know, my day job where I'm a manager of people. And usually when somebody resigns, that's between me and them. And, you know, I do what I need to do as a manager to fill that spot or do what I need to do from that, right? But this was the first time I've ever been involved in something so public.
Maybe for tricky scenario.
So this is like my seventh superintendent. I've been around a long time. And usually they let us know before it gets out in the media, you know. It doesn't matter. I mean, media is faster nowadays than it was back when I first started, but anyhow.
Yeah, I think that, I don't know, I'm not going to try to explain, but...
No, I know.
It was definitely in the media before it was really official to the school committee too, so.
Which it hasn't really even been official. Well, maybe it was as of last night then. Yeah, I'm trying to think of what the rest of the question was too. Kind of our different, differentiating views on hiring the superintendent. It seems like we're all on the same page there that this year would probably be best suited to have an interim. And then that way we have the time to make a good choice for who the superintendent should be going forward. I'm trying to remember what the other part of her question was though.
The other part of the question was about school occupancy, I guess. And yeah, how you're, how you would like to reimagine how to use the schools, I guess. Or even how you would go about like coming up with a solution if you don't have a solution yet, which is totally understandable.
I feel like it's not really unfortunate and it's coming from a school too. When we had had the walkthroughs and things like that, I definitely had my hat on of having my own experience of what my classroom in my building that I work at is set up as, I do know. And it's been brought up at several meetings that the programming that Randy has is part of it too. I think it needs, it was challenging going through these meetings and seeing that they presented ideas that they, you know, and it was almost like a pass fail. Like it was going to be this or it was going to be nothing. Which is why I think ultimately it got voted down to move the sixth grade. But it'd be nice, like Emory had mentioned it, to be more of a group effort. I think more walkthroughs potentially with school committee should happen, could happen. I would love the opportunity to talk to teachers more because they're the ones in front of the kids and see how they think it's working. The particular school that I'm at uses more of a pull-out, push-in program, programming for any kids that have needs, whether it's through Title I or they're always brought into the classroom, except obviously speech, OTPT, those kinds of things. But anything else, they have to, they try to push them into the classroom and they'll, you know, they're not losing as much time, you know, walking to the hallway. The teacher's the one running around, never using the bathroom. But so I don't know, and it's hard to even almost address this issue at this time because we don't know what the expectations for going back to school are going to be. It brings open a whole new can of worms on that front. So there's going to be a lot that's going to come into this.
Two, just views on that. Like Audrey just said, though, she makes a good point. It's going to be really hard to even talk about the capacity issue. And honestly, we don't know what the school year is going to look like. We could have a much bigger capacity issue if, I'm sure people have seen, they're talking 10 children in a classroom. That would be a whole other issue. But coming from last year with the capacity issue, I attended every focus group in the very beginning of it and heard a lot of different ideas. I was under the impression with the vote that when it was voted to not move the sixth grade to the high school, that it would continue to be talked about with the options that were brought up. Some included transforming the common area into a usable space or reprogramming preschool was a big one. There's two classrooms there, which originally were one. There was one on the plan, but they're utilizing two and actually one teacher did leave. So that's, it was still up in the air. There was talk about or a suggestion of, instead of having two sixth grade classes, to have two of whatever the smallest grade in the school is. And I know personally, that's actually my child's going into fourth grade. They are the smallest grade. So rather than saying sixth grade is two, just go with whatever the smallest grade in the school is. That is the only thing that I was personally a little frustrated with when a few weeks ago, it was just approved to have 23 school choice students come into the district for next year. Of course, this was before the pandemic, but I really thought that we would have cleared up our capacity issue before taking on more students because now my daughter's class, who is the smallest, if they just voted for another four children, that does change the dynamic of if that could have been two grades. And plus you have to add in account, people are moving to town, just terrific with children. So we have to add in room for resident growth. More options that I definitely would like to expand on and do walkthroughs while students and teachers are there. And like Audrey had said, talk to the teachers. It's really concerning to me in a sense that there hasn't been any teacher input since the fall of meetings I've attended. Admin, of course, is there and speaks for, you know, the educators. But it would be great to hear those teachers that this is going to impact and what their ideas are and what they could see. Maybe there's some problem solving that they're thinking of that we haven't gotten to yet. But that's where my stance was versus pushing, moving them to the high school.
Yeah, the only, the only thing that concerns me, I mean, I'm wide open to a lot of different suggestions. What I, what scares me is using money to renovate a building that's relatively brand new when we need so much more in other areas. That really concerns me. I'm open to relooking at how we do many other things. The other thing that scares me is removing services from people, from anybody that may require those services. Those, those two things scare me the most, but as long as neither of those are impacted, I'm wide open to whatever comes my way.
Are you referring to, I don't know what services you're referring to being removed.
Any, like any services, if somebody says, well, we have to get rid of pre-K, there's a lot of stuff that happens in pre-K that's important to start to lay that groundwork. I get concerned when I hear that without understanding a lot more about what they're trying to do, who it's going to impact and how it's going to impact them. That's all.
Okay, to clarify the preschool comment though, I definitely was personally referring to looking at the programming of preschool. This year, I had heard that there were less than 10 students in each classroom. It was AM, PM setup. It was just, there could have been talk about restructure, what that could mean. There's many preschool models the town has used in the past. And of course, services, this is a big thing too that I learned myself. But services are also different than an academic classroom space. You can still offer services to more students if there wasn't, if there were students that needed it. Services through OTPT, speech, services are different than classroom. Sorry, how do I want to word this? I didn't realize, so preschool, of course, is not required. However, services for preschoolers are. I was all for having preschool services, absolutely services and a program. However, I do think it was something that could have been talked about, reprogramming to maybe one classroom as that was on the original building plan. That's what we had always planned for. So when the school opened and had two preschool rooms, we, we had to have known that we were going to be short one classroom because we always anticipated on only having one preschool. So that was, it was just a chat of, I was curious why that wasn't looked into at all with the capacity issue.
So part of it, so just to be... So part of it, so just to be really right out there, one of the things that concerns me when it comes to reconfiguring and downsizing our preschool is just the year before, we voted to go to half-day sessions on, on that because there were so many people involved in it. Wide open to looking at, you know, adjustments to that, but it just confuses me as to how we can be so short one year, we have to go to half-day sessions in order to, to accommodate it. And when we were talking about that, they said it was going to be for the foreseeable future. And then all of a sudden we're out, you know, all of a sudden we're able to get down to one classroom. That's all. And I, I'll listen to anything, uh, but that's, that's what, some of the stuff that I was told and some of the stuff that had happened prior to last summer.
That's, and that's great too. I think open, I mean, I'm open, of course, too. I just felt like once we had the vote, we really haven't heard anything. I know that there's been all these other things that have come up, but it's been for quite a while that none of the other options have been talked about at all.
And, 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 and that's a very fair point, but we had the vote end of, well, right before March and like two weeks later, we were shutting the schools down, not knowing if and when we were going to be open, right? So that's why, I mean, it, like, like in the meetings, it's been on the agenda, but when we get to it, it just kind of gets pushed aside because we don't have enough base to really have a discussion. We don't know what we don't know right now. Like, like I read the news too, 10, 10 kids per classroom. What does that mean?
That means 10 kids per classroom.
And I think the challenge too is getting into the classrooms and seeing kind of what's going on, if at all possible. And obviously with everything going on now, how that would be possible, but really like that, to try to get in there or, like I said, getting out to teachers and hearing what they have to say because they're the ones really on the front line dealing with this. You know, what are they seeing? Are they, are, you know, even we had talked at one point too, like Stephanie had mentioned, that maybe the fifth grade or the sixth grade shouldn't be the group that's two because they have the most kids or something and choosing that group. And I'm also one of the ones that my kiddos, um, going into fourth next year and one that's going into first, and then I have a little guy. But, you know, and not that it's easier, I teach kindergarten, but I've had years where I've had 28 kids, you know, you, you kind of deal with what you have to deal with in front of you. But if we keep, it's, I feel like we're always going to be fighting it. So we school choice more kids in because we're losing them at the high school level, but then eventually we're going to hit that point where they get fifth and sixth grade and then we have this giant group. So what do we do? So we have to find a better solution. So that's where it was hard to see the vote go in, um, for all the school choice kids for me. Um, I was hoping that we could have almost focused in on one particular grade that was lower and say, all right, that's our going to be our group that is going to trek hopefully up and just have two classes and, and try to look at that every year, like what, what cluster of our homegrown kids can hopefully stay a group of two and kind of continue that up each year. Um, and I don't know if they've done registration yet this year for kindergarten and how that looks and.
Well, do remember though, um, and I, and I agree, it was a really tough thing to sit there and, you know, vote school choice. When we voted down the proposal, the school committee also committed to having this issue resolved before the school year, not this September, but the following September. So it was really going to be one tough year with whatever grade. And my understanding is when I talked to Cheryl about, because it makes a lot of sense, let's just look at the smallest class, smallest grade, and unfortunately make that the grade with two classrooms.
Right.
But the response back to me was there's other things within that grade that makes that just as hard, if not harder than the fourth grade going into two, two classes. And, and as people, some people here may know, I've got a fourth grader that's going to become a fifth grader and be one of those kids that could squeeze into two classrooms. And it's going to be hard for him. He's, he's not, I mean, he needs a lot of attention, uh, which he's not going to get.
It's so hard because there's so many parts of it for me being on that educational side. Obviously I teach in a different district, it's a city district, it's very different. But, you know, where they're using paraprofessionals and they're pushing them into, to classrooms to help provide smaller group instruction. Um, and sometimes it's not, it's not just with your special ed cluster, it's with your other clusters and you move the people where the need is. And, uh, when a group of students is at specials, they're taking that para and they're making sure that she's or he is being utilized in another way. Um, and from what I'm hearing, it's not happening. I don't know how to get more involved into the school to find out, um, this information and, and I guess that's really admin's job, but I know I can't even ask these questions unless I'm on school committee. So this is where I decided that I, I was intrigued enough and this is something obviously I'm passionate about, uh, that I wanted to get more involved in.
I did see some other questions. I don't want to, I don't know how much time we have left.
Yeah. Um, it looks like Kim has a question and June also had a question. Sorry, with regards to replacing the superintendent, would you prefer someone already involved in the district or someone outside?
I think we already kind of touched on that we thought going with an interim would probably be the best route.
Hopefully someone within.
Hopefully someone within, absolutely. With the time that we have, it's already, you know, the middle of June, so that would probably.
And Mike, I don't know if you know, with her putting in her letter of resignation, is that something that she addresses of someone that she would recommend? Because obviously she worked with everybody in the offices. How that works or she resigns and then it's good luck?
No, we, as part of Tuesday's meeting, she's going to talk about what her succession plan is, what happens when she's not in the office for extended periods of time, who would, who would do what to give, to give us a better idea of who, who might be good, you know, a great fit for an interim. But while I have, like, while I'm speaking, my, my answer to this, long-term, not just the interim, but longer term, I really, really hope that we are able as a town and/or school committee member to find somebody who's already in the district, who's ready to take that step, um, into the superintendent's role. I feel, as I was saying before, while things aren't all the way there yet, a lot of good has happened over the last couple of years. I, I, I'd really hope that we can figure out how to hear and get better input from the, the, you know, the, the staff of the school to get their input. Cause I think in this case, the way they feel is going to be huge in how we make this decision. If they, if they really like some of the people that we're looking at that are internal, I feel that's the way to go. It, it solves a lot of issues, it keeps the continuity of, you know, the game. Um, and I also fear that bringing in somebody from the outside sometimes has a ripple-down effect where good people leave and move on for reasons that, um, you know, there's a lot of reasons, they just don't get along with the, you know, the person or they don't like the change and the, uh, the outlook of the philosophy. And I really think that the district has, has, has grown so much that I think that needs to be a big concern.
I agree. And in Chicago B, we just went through a superintendent change recently too, and we ended up hiring someone from internal and, and staff went out to also say that she was a great choice and support. So I hope that the staff in Granby does the same if they feel that it is a good person or speak up if they don't. I agree.
Absolutely, I think.
So my question as a staff member is, you know, in connection with whether it's someone internally or externally to do the interim, will school committee, whether it's going to be the new brew of people with some of the currents or just the currents, if they're going to reach out to current staff members?
I would absolutely hope so.
I, as a school committee member, if I'm on the committee, when it comes time to actually do some sort of a search committee, um, I know, I know as part of the search committee, the last time we had, I want to say three or four members from the teaching staff as part of the search committee, they were invaluable. Their, 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 their input was tremendous to me, helped me learn about what I should be looking for, so.
Yes, absolutely, the search committee, but it sounds like you might not do one if it's going to be an interim.
No, and I, right, you're right, but I do think there's a way we can, like, I, I really feel if I'm still part of the committee, I'm going to push this. I just, again, it's not just one, one individual's vote, it's, it's a vote of everybody, but I'm really hoping that we can form, I hate to use the word committee, but a group of people that can get input from the staff and bring that back to the full committee.
That would be wonderful. Question from Tracy Ramsey, who's a teacher, of course, um, fourth grade and asking if it'd be confidential. I think that would, I mean, I would hope, and if I was on there, I would actually definitely stress that it would need to be confidential as if it's an interim within the district, very likely it's going to be a coworker, a superior of someone's. I would definitely hope that feedback would be confidential and then you could get an honest, um, feedback from the current staff as their input is, would be crucial.
And a reminder too, that there are email addresses for all of the school committee members on the Rams app and that, and obviously they can email at any time too, but we're talking more of a, the committee, actually, the school committee reaching out to staff in a confidential way.
Correct, correct. So, I mean, everything is trackable with our email addresses. So, um, does Steph Y either? I mean, whether it's good, bad or indifferent, it doesn't matter.
And there probably is an instance where you would want to use a personal email address, honestly, you know what I mean? Just for your own sense of peace of mind.
It's not confidential.
Well.
So the, our, so, I mean, just in doing surveys and stuff like that, everything gets tagged with whoever's email address. So even if it were, say, my home address, mine comes up as kneglyery@verizon.net. You know what I mean? So the mic is associated with everything that I do. So, I mean, just, just as you people moving forward into doing school committee, which is wonderful and we do appreciate everything that you guys intend to do and do do, um, just know that, I know I said do do, sorry. Um, and it's being forwarded, isn't that wonderful? But I mean, just know that if things go out in print by anybody, you're going to get less reaction from staff.
Do you think that a better option would be like to almost print something up and hand it to the teachers and give them a spot to turn it in privately, like one teacher that compiles it or, and not using email? You know?
Could be, or a quick phone call, or a quick phone call or whatever, you know, what else?
Even these, even these Zoom calls, I've noticed since the school committee is doing the Zoom calls with the pandemic, there's been a large increase of staff attendance, which typically during the meetings or the school year, we haven't seen. And I was curious as to why and what we could do moving forward. I love that staff members are coming and listening and just curious the difference of doing them on Zoom versus in person of just convenience or what, but that, that's another thing to really look at. I'm just curious. So maybe moving forward, we could do a Zoom conference call with the school committee, um, for the search with the superintendent. That way it is confidential if it was, um, chatting within all of the school committee. I know it's different to, um, speak one-to-one versus as the group.
So I have a few thoughts here and they're not fully formulated, um, because I do, I do want people to speak freely. I do want to get the input of, of staff where I can, but as part of the superintendent search committee, uh, part of our job was to go on site, uh, site meetings with, uh, the selected few that made the final round. We, we would go out to their, their district, meet with, uh, folks that, that were like the superintendent already of the district was one of them, um, maybe with some school committee members, some of their staff, some of the parents. Obviously all handpicked, right? You're not going to get any bad word from anybody because they had the ability to say, you can come and you can't. But I, I would hope that we could figure out something to allow for people to speak freely, but you also have to remember part of this is open, is subject to open meeting laws at the same time. So we have to be careful, but I think it can be done because we've done it with these, with these search committees in the past where we went on these site surveys. So I think there's something there. I just don't have it all out in front of me. And to be honest with you, usually we get to a point and then we turn around and send it out to legal counsel to confirm what we want to do is actually legal and how we would approach it. So.
I think right now the staff concern is really just making sure that they're being heard, that if it's someone that is coming from within, that they have had the opportunity to share their true feelings on that person as a leader, because they're the person that deals with that leader the most, which is.
Right, and confidentially, of course, because you want their honest opinions.
Yeah, agreed.
And I do, I do also have experience with, um, a confidential employee survey where my boss walks up to me three days before it ends and says, you haven't taken it yet. And I'm thinking, how confidential can it be if you know I didn't take?
Right. Yeah. Good time.
Um, I'm going to look over the questions again. Kim had a question.
Kim?
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry. So I was also going to ask, I saw, we, I think you guys skipped Stephanie's question or I didn't hear it being answered. Um, I was also wondering how long Mike has been on school committee for because I don't know the answer to that, and I was also wondering that. And I was just wondering like what Mike, like why Mike wants to stay on school committee? Like why he's got on school committee, why he wants to stay on school committee and how long he's been on school committee?
I, this is, well, a little over three years. It was a three-year term and I've been in for one term, uh, but because the elections got pushed out, here we are. I got involved, uh, because I was sick and tired of going to town meeting every year and watching the cutbacks and watching them cut this and cut that and being angry about it and said, we got to do better. I got it and then I would come home frustrated and I was being told by my wife, either shut up or get involved. I, I got involved, uh, I got involved as being part of the search committee and then, um, got to know some people from the school committee, um, started to understand where they, what, what, what they saw and what they were thinking and, and, um, thought, I should, I should try to get involved. I was also afraid that with the way things are in this town, that there wouldn't be somebody running for that seat, so I put in for it. Little did I, I went out and I bought all these signs and tried to run a little bit of a campaign, little did I know I was running against nobody but myself. So I was pretty much a shoo-in. And the reason I want to run for a second term, again, it comes down to as much stuff that I think has happened that is good, we're nowhere near done. Um, and I'd like to be, I'd like to be part of the continuity to keep things moving in the right direction. And the right direction, I get it, is different for a lot of different people. There's certain parts of the direction we're headed in now, I'm not, I'm not convinced. But overall, the district has made some very good strides in some very important places. I hope I hit all those, Kim. I'm sorry if I don't, if I didn't.
Yeah, no, no, that was good. Thank you. Um, my other thing was also like following up with the moving sixth grade question. Like I obviously know that, you know, I went to all the meetings and I saw that you were very interested in moving sixth grade, and I'm wondering why that was so important to you. Was that just because Cheryl was very interested in moving sixth grade or was that you personally wanting to move sixth grade?
I, to be honest with you, I know you would probably disagree. I've got really no interest in moving the sixth grade just for moving the sixth grade. I have every interest in trying to keep class sizes at a, at the right level. We can discuss what the right level is. I also have very little desire to take money from anywhere and apply it to a building that's brand new. To me, moving sixth grade was like a mediocre idea sandwiched between two really bad ideas.
Two of the lesser of three evils.
Right.
Pretty much. It was not something I was ever in love with. I just don't want class sizes to get into that, with, with the range that they're going to get into next year for one grade, um, barring any, you know, new information from the state. And I don't want that for any grade, for any class, for any student, if, 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 if there's another solution and I don't want to cut anything from anybody who needs it.
That does just beg the question to me though, too. I was just still trying to wrap my brain around approving 23 additional students, knowing that we haven't solved our capacity issue. So as school committee and, you know, being one that voted for that, I'm just curious your opinion on, um, voting that in, even though we haven't solved this. And now I feel like, I mean, that is only creating larger class sizes when we haven't solved the problem.
So yes, yes and no. Um, again, bear in mind. So yes, yes and no. Um, again, bear in mind, the committee itself had decided that it was going to have this issue resolved one way or another by the beginning of the following school year. The, the, just because we approve choice in does not mean we're going to get those students to fill those desks. And as stated before, um, earlier, the money that we get for school choice is required because what we get from the town plus the 305 is still short to run the district every day. What, where we get that gap filled is the school choice and the circuit breaker funds. It's not a lot of money, but it's enough to cover the really required services plus the small things that we really want to do that don't fit into that, that whole bucket. So again, it's, it's a lesser of a number of evils.
It is hard. I mean, obviously because we know we're using it as an operating budget when it should be a surplus budget and it's not. And the problem is, is because we have too many kids choicing out too, you know? So we're not able to use it as a surplus and instead we're using it as an operating. So then that bears to question, how can we turn that around? What, we need to hear from families. We need to hear from the community of how do we keep these kids at the school? How do we keep them not chasing out? And that's a big area to discuss.
Yeah. And the school district has, they do, they do talk to kids who choice out. Again, I don't know how honest those answers are. Um, and I believe most of that is just perception. There are some fabulous things happening in a high school, absolutely fantastic. These kids graduate. I, I went to the, I went to the graduation, uh, I think it was last year or the year before. 10 kids in the front row were going to Ivy League schools. I mean, out of a class of 44, that's, that's a huge percentage. Is that important? Not to everybody, but, but my point is, is I think our high school is actually helping deliver kids to where they, that, you know, the next step to where they want to go. And I think it's one of the fabulous.
Well, because that's, because the education isn't happening necessarily in the structure around you. It's the person that you have in front of you. I mean, really, it's educators making a difference, you know? It could be.
I think so.
Absolutely.
Well, that's what I had brought up in the beginning too, is, you know, I think that shedding another light away from, yes, we know the high school building is not in ideal um, form. However, like, I would love to share more about all the good, like, Mike, what you just said, you know? That's an amazing percentage of kids going to phenomenal schools or the extracurricular activities that are happening. I have heard amazing things out, the newer administration with Mr. Sullivan and Ms. Roy, just phenomenal things from parents, from students. I'd love to get out there to break some of the stigma of maybe what people thought about 10 years ago. That are, it's still being buzzed around that we don't have honors classes, we don't have some of these things that we in fact do have, that we maybe we don't talk about, but we do have enough. Um, and really that should get out there a lot more. In addition, I think too, um, just to touch back on, you know, reaching out to the town, I think having public meetings, maybe quarterly, open forum discussion would be great. So we can have these more informal sharing ideas, getting the back and forth dialogue that we don't get during school committee meetings, because of course they are business meetings, would be great involvement to have the community in.
And then people feel heard.
Yeah. And I, and I agree. Part of that is time, right? It takes time from, for school committees to do that, which to me is not a big deal, but it's hard to get the committee together sometimes. Um, and the other part is in some places where we've done that, nobody shows up or so few people show up. It's, it's, it's not, it's not a great thing. Like, like, look at tonight, uh, Meet the Candidates. There's what, 15 of us sitting here out of a town of 6,000, 7,000?
Can I just, it is more than I actually anticipated. So thank you all for coming. Cause I was thinking it's going to be two people. And I was like, why don't you just be hanging out on Zooms for a little bit?
And then the, and then the MASC group coming in to talk about how schools are funded. I thought that was going to be fantastic, right? There was a lot of great information I thought was going to be shared. And again, who showed up? 10 people. And I, and I was down at COA popping up the bulletins and I was talking, I think a couple of people showed up that I recognized um, that I had a discussion with, with the woman at the early mug like two, two days before. I'm not sure they would have shown up if I didn't, I didn't, if I didn't sit there and talk about it. But it's, it's hard. It's hard to get people to show up, um, especially when. And to your point, should we have more open hearing type sessions? Probably. But, but I'd, I'd, I'd love to be able to get the commitment from the committee and get the commitment from the town to show up and, and, you know, and have these talks. Now, to be honest with you, I was on the fence about tonight myself. And, and it turns out that this was fantastic. I, I really enjoyed myself here.
Yeah. And I'm curious too, if this platform, I mean, now that we've all been forced to become comfortable with it, would be a beneficial thing because, you know, I just noticed someone else had popped on, I allowed in too. Um, I'm not going to call her out, um, but because they suddenly see it on Facebook and then they're like, oh, I meant to go. Like, so now I can just pop in still on my couch, leave my screen off, whatever, versus drive out, be dressed and everything else too, which kind of leads to it being a little easier to pop in. So it might be something to consider going forward too.
Mm-hmm. Absolutely. The last few meetings um, in quarantine on Zoom have actually been, you know, the highest participation that we've had in the school committees in the last year. And I know that their staff wanted to hear what's going on, but there's been a lot of parents too. And I do think it's nice myself. I was on last night doing my dishes, listening to the joint committee meeting and still doing things I had going on at home that maybe before I would have been like, you know what? It's 6:30. I'm tired. I have all this to do and we don't come out. Along with, I've heard a lot of people that get discouraged coming to the meetings because there isn't that open dialogue. And I feel like they're just sitting there week after week or, you know, a few times a month not being heard, which is where that, having that public meeting quarterly, I don't think would be too difficult for us to pull off.
And I, I even tried, and I, I didn't do a good job of it, uh, but I tried doing some office hours for a while. Um, I didn't know that somebody was there waiting for me to, to call them up. But it's, it's just, it's, it's hard to find that, that commitment from, from both sides. I mean, my, you know, myself included, I have the best intentions, but sometimes I blink and the world's turning on me and I, I got this to do for, you know, for that and this to do for that. But again, um, I just, I just really hope that we can get to that point. And one of the subcommittees we created was actually to kind of get us to that point, uh, to where we can talk across the town effectively. I, I think it's going to be a pain point for a while. Um, there's a trust thing on both sides that needs to be broken down, um, and understood. And then I guess a commitment from both sides too, that we're really going to stick through this.
So I just saw that there's another question too, by the way. Um, it says the budget will be an issue going forward. What do you, um, what will you do to ensure that vitality, vital programs like SED don't continue to get cut? Um, I said, I have no intentions hopefully get cut. I feel like that would be bottom of the list. SED programs are required by law. Um, past practices have shown that when these cuts happen, they don't usually get reinstated when times improve. Especially, and one of the issues, we know with the um, current requirements at the elementary school is when there, that we also have that space issue is because of some programmings that are required that we have to have. Um, it costs more money to send a child out than it does to keep them within. So those are absolutely vital and programs.
Some of that is, oh, I'm sorry. I didn't, I don't know if you can, I was going to say, SED is important. SED is, a lot, a lot of what we do for SED is required by law. To your point, Audrey, we, we have um, done some things in town where we've, we've increased some, some spending internally to decrease spending to send somebody out of district because it's not just, it's not just the cost of the, the program they go to, it's also how to get them there. I mean, that, that, that.
Desperation, correct.
Yeah, that, that's, that's huge. Now, now other vital programs, that's, that's, that's hard, right? Because everything is vital to somebody. So no matter what we decide to cut, it's going to impact somebody in a negative way. That's where it gets really hard.
Correct. And that's again, I feel like sometimes those times where it'd be great to hear from staff, you know? How do you feel that the school's running? You know, we don't, we don't want to have to cut um, specials, musics and arts and gym and things like that. We don't, you don't want to have to cut sports because that's another big thing that is just going to force more kids to choice out at another school that has the sports that they have that we don't. Um, so, you know, and finding out, you know, where the cuts need to come from. And I feel like that has to be a group discussion on the table. Even this year, I was surprised, you know, we have um, postings that just went out. You know, we know that we're going to be facing cuts. I don't, it's, I'm not there on the front lines right now to, involved in the school to say where, you know, should we be hiring another paraprofessional right now or not? Um, you know, but those are things, sometimes you have to find out where the best suited is. But that's where you also, as school committee, hope that you've hired the best superintendent that is running their school, that is hiring the best principals, you know? That's where the chain of command all comes in and that you're hoping you have the best people that you've chosen as your team.
And two, and two more small, quick things. I'm sorry I keep jumping in, but.
No, it's not a problem.
All of this is wicked important and it's all kind of interconnected and looped together in so many different ways. It's, it's ridiculous to think about and talk about, but um, in all honesty, part, some, some, sometimes cuts, like your, 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 your statement about posting for a position, this year might not make sense, but if you think strategically saying, I know we're going to need X, Y, and Z, and if we hire that individual now while they're here in front of us, it starts us on that path. So we don't pay more money later to get someplace where we need to be anyways. That's always some, that, that has to come from the, you know, the leadership team to let us as a school committee understand what's needed longer term as well as short term. And then the other statement that you made about cuts and bad times don't always or usually get reinstated when times are better. It's exactly why I got back, tried to get on the school committee in the first place. Because I wanted, as I sat there when they're cutting this and cutting that, I wanted to make sure that we figured out how we put that back in at some other point in time. Has it been possible? Not always, but I think in some ways we've actually brought back some of these smaller things.
And that's the challenge too, is finding um, when these cuts are made is, is when we put back in certain positions and hopefully get the ones. For me, obviously being a teacher, I feel like it's most impactful when it's the ones that are sitting in front of the kids. I obviously understand the importance of administration and what's running on behind the scenes and supporting the staff. Um, but, you know, having those people in front of the kids is very important.
Absolutely. It's for sure. And just to re, I mean, I'm going to reiterate what Audrey said too. As far as cutting special ed, I don't believe that any of us have any intention of doing that. And as stated, I mean, it, by law, we have to have these services. I certainly would not be looking into cutting any sort of special ed. Or of course you want to cut whatever is going to be the lowest impact to the students, whether that means looking at whatever non-core classes are offered that have low enrollment or getting um, creative with scheduling. Um, that's been a big thing I've been curious about. That school committee did ask, um, I believe Mr. Kiech just asked about that before. Really seeing the schedules and making sure that there's nothing that we can do better to put more bodies in front of kids where we need it. Um, that's another thing that I would definitely like to learn more. We briefly went into that in the fall and I would definitely like to um, look into that further. Trying to see what these comments were.
We had a comment from Allison asking who it was that were the candidates and it sounds like Kim answered her, but I'm Audrey.
Thank you, Kim. And I'm Stephanie.
I'm Mike.
Welcome. So I don't know if anyone else has any questions. I feel like there's definitely a lot of great questions that are being asked. There's no doubt that this, we've said it to Mike 100 times, this is a thankless job. It's not something that I think I'm, we would be coming into easily. Um, it's definitely going to be a challenge, especially with these new things that have all come up just in these last few months and weeks. Um, but I'm looking forward to working with a group of people together towards a common goal, which is the kids of Granby and the kids at the Granby Public Schools.
I think the next couple of years are going to be extremely difficult on many different levels. Not just with the school committee, but with the town in general too.
Oh, for sure.
Absolutely. It's going to be tough for everyone. And I think it's going to be the time that we're all going to need to come together the most for sure and do its best for all residents and all of the families in Granby. Um, it's definitely going to be a uphill, but I'm sure we'll get through.
Well, and I think something that'll benefit us is opening these doors of communication too. You know, just like in any, any relationships that you have with anybody, you have to have those lines of communication open. So, you know, as far as feedback on, you know, do they think that, you know, these are beneficial, these informal meetings? You know, if people are going to come to them, that they have questions, that they feel like they can ask them and get them answered? Because that's key right there is being able to get your questions answered.
Absolutely.
It also stops the, the chatter that sometimes happens of, of opinion versus fact. You know, meeting face to face and being able to talk to someone face to face. Absolutely. Any other questions or anything? Thank you, Kristen.
Thank you, Kristen.
I want to, I want to thank whoever put this together. Was that you, Stephanie? Cause it was.
It was a joint effort on Audrey and I. We were talking, doing it for a while. But I'm really glad that we did this and that you joined us, Mike. It was really.
Yeah, agreed.
I, I don't, I don't have the, I don't, I don't have the knowledge as to how to do this, something like this myself, so.
Now, I have to have them regularly now for work. Yay.
I, yeah, I have these types of meetings too, but it's over this thing called WebEx and it hardly ever works for me. Like, every other time I dial into it, I have an issue of some sort.
Yeah. No, it was a learning process, but.
Sure. It's right in my mind. Cool backgrounds for you guys.
So I think this was great. Um, it, and again, I, I don't know what had the best way to reach out to us further. Obviously, um, Mike has his school committee email address, um, Facebook Messenger. I am on Facebook. I don't tend to comment too much on the posts or get too involved. I tend to be a little bit more quieter, but I'm open to discussion or, or private chatting at any time. And then it seems to, please consider having virtual meetings next, next year. I'm assuming that you mean um, for school committee, Kristen, every now and then you think it would be nice to have a virtual meeting? And I agree because I feel like um, it has been nice to see more faces or tiles on the screen. Um, if maybe that can be something that can be considered for the school committee going forward is maybe one meeting a month being a Zoom meeting versus a face to face? Or whether maybe it's streamed? I'm trying to think um, whether or not, if they did roundtable and then, because then you wouldn't be able to comment necessarily, but I know Alex has been posting them immediately on YouTube versus being online. I don't know if there's an opinion on what would be better. Posting it on YouTube immediately that you can watch it or being able to tune in on Zoom.
I would enjoy it. I would actually enjoy it either way. Um, just being a staff member, it's kind of nice just to hear what the school committee is working on um, and the thought processes, you know, that they're being, that are being brought forth to them and how they're problem solving it. And then also hearing like the community input that first three minutes or whatever, that first section during the open meeting. Um, it just allows me to just get a better viewpoint.
Agreed.
Yeah. And I'm, I, I would love to search out new and different ways. Um, unfortunately, there's two things. With one, there's certain things we have to do that are required by law the way. Like, I don't, I don't know if this Zoom is only an interim allowance by the state, if we may be forced to go back to something more traditional. Um, the other thing I hate is being traditional just for the sake of being traditional if it doesn't work. I don't want to be forced, and this goes back to the schools too. I don't want to be forced to go back to something that was, that once was, because to be honest with you, there was probably a lot of things that didn't work for a lot of people. Um, I'm, I'm really open and I really like to try to take what was that worked for the most people and then doing something better with that too, at the same time.
I definitely think that there's um, definitely room to look into this. I think that we've had a really good feedback and moving forward, no matter who was on the committee, I would hope that they will definitely be able to take the feedback and look into how we can adapt to possibly incorporating this virtual meets.
Platform.
I, I would love to sit here in my own dining room and have the school committee meetings all the time rather than sit in East Mill. I love the building, but I get tired of looking at the same books across from me every other week. week.
And then when those meetings run until 9 o'clock at night, or whatever, weekend, and head on to the kitchen. Okay, well, thank you so much, everybody, for coming. Could you host on screen and record the meeting? So I did record this meeting, and Alex from G-Cam has requested it. I'm not exactly sure how I'm going to get it to him at this point. I'm going to leave that up to him, but I have recorded it, it is going to download onto my computer. I know for work, I upload them to my drive, and then I can give them access, so I'm assuming that's how I'm going to do this for him. So I'll be in communications with him, so I'm assuming he'll probably post something on YouTube regarding this.
There was another chat about someone wondering about the voting. I don't know if you guys missed
What are the next steps? Is there a vote?
Voting is on June 22nd. They are encouraging absentee votes, just for safety and ease. You can get that by calling Kathy Kelly Regan at the town hall.
The June 22nd vote is from noon until 6:00 PM, so it's reduced hours than it was any other time. So that's another reason why they're encouraging the absentee vote via mail, which can be done now until the 20th. I believe the 20th. Now I'm second guessing myself saying that, but I think it's the 20th.
Is it, so, so, so does anybody know where they're, where they're going to have the election?
At the high school, is my understanding.
And I believe, hope is to have it outside, I believe.
Okay.
I think that's all still to be determined, because
Someone else is joining. Mrs. Danette. Welcome, Mrs. Danette, we were just ending.
Cheryl, I have to tell you, Cheryl's been trying to get on for the longest time, and we've all been trying to help her.
Oh, no!
I'm sorry. I didn't see it.
I, I don't think it was on your end, it was on the link end. Yeah, no, it's, poor Cheryl.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, well, it's recorded, and it is going to be posted later. Alex on G-Cam is going to be posting it, so you can tune in.
Okay.
Did you have any questions or anything that you wanted to ask before we?
No, can you hear me?
Yeah, take that.
No, I just, I just wanted to, I just wanted to, you know, see everybody, and I don't know why, my link wouldn't work. I was on my Mac and my iPhone, nothing. But now, now that it's over, I'm on. Okay, great. Great. Oh, well.
Well, I mean, I'm happy to stay on if anyone else had any questions. We did, like Stephanie was saying, we are going to be passing it on to Alex at G-Cam, and hopefully he'll be uploading it to YouTube and that. I don't know if you want to take a minute and look at the questions on the right-hand side that were also addressed, actually, it might be at the bottom for you in the chat. If you click that, you'll be able to see some questions that are asked, obviously not the responses to, because maybe if there's a particular question that you have that wasn't asked or that we didn't address.
You know what? They're not coming up on my phone.
Oh, okay.
That's all right, that's all right. I'll just, you know, I'll just watch it later, and I just wanted, yeah, thank you, though.
Thank you for trying, I'm sorry that it didn't work for you.
Yeah, well, you know, it's all right, girls. All righty.
All righty.
Have a good night, Ethan.
Okay, anybody else anything before we head out? I think this was nice. I thank all of you for coming.
For coming.
Thank you.